Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Today is Wednesday, March 7th, and we're heading into our third work session. If I could ask everybody in the room to please join us at the council for the pledge.
I would like to introduce to the United States or to the Republic of Canada, the nation of the people who have chosen this role.
Rob, I'd like to defer to you if you have any opening remarks.
So, on tonight's schedule to be discussed is the Human Services and Outside Agencies, the Public Safety Program, which includes the Police Department, Dispatch, Animal Control, Harbor Patrol, Communications, Emergency Medical Services, an overview on insurance, capital outlay, and the Debt Service Fund. Human Services for this year is proposed as a level funding of one hundred and forty-two thousand, as you have in the past. I think you've asked each service provider to come up and give a few words and share their services, so I would hand it over to you.
Actually, if you don't mind, I'm going to jump in real quick. I'm a former-
Can you use the- just don't forget the mic.
A former grant administrator, so I can't help but comment a little bit on this here tonight. As Trish was pointing out, the proposed funding in both the human service agencies and the outside agencies is level funded. That's really a reflection of the difficulties that municipalities have had for decades now. But I do think it's important for us to remember that nonprofit organizations and outside agencies can be a force multiplier. They can actually make it a lot easier on local governments to achieve the outcomes that we're looking to achieve. So it's very important for us to think about this as a partnership, as a relationship between the municipality and the organizations that are doing things that frankly, we can't do because we don't have the manpower, we don't have the resources, we don't have the expertise in some cases. I just want to touch on this because I think it's important to ground grant applications and grant requests and grant funding in some sort of intellectually defensible framework. And the economists talk about the nonprofit sector as the third sector. It sort of fills a void between the for-profit, profit motivated, "I'm going to produce goods because I get something more than I give in the transaction view of the world," and the public good sector, the government sector, which is really all about doing things that the private sector can't make a profit doing. There are two other areas, though, that economists talk about, and those are common pool goods and club goods. And in that space, there's a lot of interaction and a lot of overlap between for-profit organizations, nonprofit organizations, and government. And this is sort of where the grant application opportunities really arise. A theory around when governments ought to make grants is well articulated in this article published about, I don't know how many, fourteen years ago. Governments should buy those things necessary for the public that, because of market conditions, will not be produced if the government doesn't buy them. They're necessary for the public. They're not going to be produced in the market unless we're the consumer, unless we're the buyers of those services. I think that's a really clean way to think about those relationships between nonprofit organizations, and for that matter, for-profit organizations potentially, and government services. That theory of grants plugs into this model. It really is just a series of questions about whether or not the grant is one that makes sense for government to be funding. Is it seed money that does something that we think is important to do? Is it a startup that just can't get going unless government gives it the seed money to get it going and start this important initiative? Is it driving innovation? Is this an organization that's proposing to do something that changes the way we're doing something and potentially brings about an innovation that improves the community? Or is this a maintenance funding grant? All of those are legitimate reasons to fund grants, but they each require us to think about what we're doing a little differently. The next important question is, should this be a grant, or should we be looking to a contract on this activity? Is the thing that's being proposed to be done something that should be a contractual relationship with a tighter set of relationships and responsibilities spelled out, that kind of thing? This is that economist question on the flow chart. Would this activity happen without the grant? If the private sector is going to do it anyway, are we contributing to anything by adding our money to the mix? Can the success of the grant-funded activity be measured? That's an important thing for us always to keep in mind because we're trying to achieve a particular public good when we spend public money. And then finally, is the grant, is the money we're giving enough? Are we actually contributing to a successful project by making this money available? I like this framework. I wanted to share this framework. I think it's important for us to have some way of evaluating these things. And again, nonprofits can be a tremendous force multiplier. They can make a big difference and improve the quality of life and improve the quality of the outcomes that we can contribute to. We're delighted that we have a cast of nonprofit leaders here in the room who are committed to helping us do wonderful things and have done wonderful things in South Kingstown. And I just want to make sure that you know that we are sort of thinking about this in a way that we hope will make the relationships work as we go forward. With that, the list is here, and I will turn it back to you, President.
Thank you, Rob. I guess we should start, we have this on, is that- oh, are you finished?
No, yeah, I think you just want to go through your human service agencies discussion.
Yes, and we just, I guess this is updated, that is on our table. So, at this point in time, I'm not quite sure, I'll defer this, we probably have many members who want to speak, so I would open it up to start with the agencies that are here. If anybody is here from Thundermist and would like to come up and speak to the request, please come up to the podium and state your name and-
Just one quick question on this sheet that we have. I assume that it's a typo on the Washington County Regional Planning Council that there's still five thousand in the proposed budget, that's zero going to be zero now.
Actually, that five thousand dollars is in the proposed budget. It was there as a placeholder. We had anticipated that an application would come in from the agency. It did not, so that five thousand dollars has not been requested, and it's not a typo, it's just that it hasn't been requested. The anticipated application did not come in.
We will open up the mic and start.
Hello, my name's Amanda Barney. I'm the Associate Vice President of Communications and Development at Thundermist Health Center. Thank you for your consideration this afternoon, this evening. Thundermist Health Center is requesting twenty-four thousand dollars to support care for the most vulnerable in our community. Thundermist is a federally qualified health center that provides primary care, behavioral health, dental, and social services to the residents of South County. In 2015, we opened a new building, which I think some of you are familiar with, and that helped us to increase access in this community for the most vulnerable. Last year, in total, across our state, Thundermist cared for forty-five thousand, more than forty-five thousand Rhode Islanders, which means that one out of every twenty Rhode Islanders is turning to our health center for care. Here in South Kingstown, more than thirty-three hundred residents came to our facility up the street. Three hundred and four of those were uninsured and received care in our facility, and nearly sixteen hundred patients qualified for reduced fees for their care at Thundermist. And all of those people lived here in South Kingstown. Thundermist serves patients of all ages, cultures, and income levels. Even more importantly, we're open three hundred and sixty-five days per year, so there's never a day that someone is seeking care that we're not open to provide that care. We offer lab services onsite and offer reduced fee lab work for uninsured patients based on family size and income. And there's two full-time social workers at our South Kingstown location that are available to serve those patients that are at need or at risk. Clients are referred to other local community organizations, and they're also assisted with health insurance enrollment and obtaining other needed healthcare services. This funding that we've requested would help us to continue our mission of caring for patients regardless of their ability to pay, and we appreciate your consideration.
I just had a quick comment. I have a foster child at home, and we bring her to Thundermist for dental care, and I was so impressed with how beautiful the building is and how professional the services are. And I just wanted to make the point that it's not just for people who might be uninsured. I know anybody could go in there and get some services if they need it and feel welcome. It's a beautiful place, so we're very lucky to have you.
Absolutely, and thank you. That's one of our goals, is to make sure that everyone that enters our doors feels welcome, both our patients and our employees, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tri-county Community Action, do we have somebody here from Tri-County? We'll move on to South County Home Health. Johnny Cake Center of Peasdale.
Good evening, I'm Kate Brewster, and I'll start by saying that I just signed my whole family and my mother up as patients at Thundermist Health Center, and we love it, so thank you. But I am here representing the Johnny Cake Center of Peasdale, and we're very grateful for the support that we have received from the town. Just as a quick recap to benefit the town manager, our mission is to help members, community members, meet their basic human needs. It's pretty simple, and I know that you are all very familiar with the center's services. We're best known for our food pantry and thrift store. Last year, we distributed two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand pounds of food out of the pantry, including fifty-five-thousand pounds of fresh produce. We do this through monthly visits to the pantry and deliveries to homebound seniors. We also have a weekly school vacation meals program, and we allow people to pick up produce every summer. The funds we receive from the town are especially important because we are providing school vacation meals to a host of children. I think last week during vacation, it was over two-hundred children in our community who don't have a meal site to attend to. In other parts of the state, there are public meal sites. We don't have those here, so it's incredibly important. And just to give you a sense of the trend, in 2015, we served fifteen thousand school vacation meals. Last year, it was twenty-two thousand, almost a fifty percent increase. So the need and utilization is continuing to grow. I wanted to just briefly mention that we know that hunger is a symptom of poverty and other issues. We have actually added several programs and services to help put people on a path towards economic security. We're now working with our members through motivational coaching. We're offering emergency financial services to prevent homelessness and utility shut-offs. We're also offering cooking and nutrition classes, community health outreach, and this year, we're now doing free tax filings for folks. Steve Alfred used to warn me not to spread ourselves too thin, but we do find, and we have been approached by outside agencies like the IRS who have come to us and said, "Can you please fill this gap that we believe exists in the community?" And through some of that work, we've been working much more intensely with families. And I do just want to mention, since I have your ear for one second, that we have seen a really disturbing trend with some of the poorest families in our town moving out. Recently, we've seen at least three or four families who were doubled up, who were living in their cars, have to move to the northern part of the state because they couldn't find affordable housing. And I know the Affordable Housing Collaborative and the Town Council is working hard to look at how we can expand that. Welcome House has done an outstanding job of filling some of that gap when we've called and said, "We've got somebody or an entire family that we need to house," and they've done that. But the need is much greater than we have capacity to deal with right now. I also will just close by saying that as part of a grant we received, we are trying to organize a Peasdale Leadership Council with residents, many of whom live in public and subsidized housing, to really help understand what their needs are, what the challenges are that they face, and bring resources to bear to them that can really help improve the lives of their families and their communities. So I thank you again for the support the town receives. We get almost zero federal or state dollars at this point, so this is the largest source of public funding that we have, and we're really grateful, so thank you.
Kate, could I ask you one quick question?
Sure.
You mentioned the increase in the school, I'm sorry, vacation lunch program. Is it that more people are finding out about it, or is it just more people are needing that service?
It's hard to know. I think when we started, the superintendent suggested, which was a smart thing to do, that we not tie it to school breakfast, free or reduced lunch, which we had been requiring if someone wanted to enroll, so we eliminated that requirement. We've been doing a lot more outreach, but clearly, the folks who are coming are needing it. So it's hard to say whether, what the cause is, but I do think that the needs are increasing. As housing costs are climbing, as the market strongly rebounds, people are really putting a lot of their money into other budget items and know they can come to us for this service every week that the kids aren't in school.
I have two quick questions. I remember during the, when we were handing out Thanksgiving meals, you said that you were helping, or distributing to Narragansett residents, too, and that was, was that new for that, this year?
We've always covered Narragansett and South Kingstown.
Okay, the numbers I thought were significantly-
The Narragansett School Department and Housing Authority used to do a really good job of providing Thanksgiving baskets, if you will, to families in that community, and this year, they stopped doing that. So anybody who might not have been tied to the Johnny Cake Center for regular services but was receiving that support through the town of Narragansett was now coming to us. So we did see a huge uptick. Same for holiday gifts for the kids as well. We're now covering both towns for both of those services only.
Does Narragansett contribute to?
They do.
Okay, good.
Not as much.
And I have one final question. I know you and the town manager and the president of the hospital were meeting at sort of a monthly ad hoc committee, if you will, and I was just wondering if you could update us on that and give a little background on it.
Sure. As part of the Healthy Body, Healthy Minds work that the, in the Health Equity Zone work, Steve Alfred and Lucian Cole, the president of South County Health, had started a regular meeting, bringing together a host of agencies and leaders from the community. That has continued. I'm going to say your name wrong, I'm sorry. But the new town manager, Rob, whose last name, I forget how to pronounce, has attended. We had one last month, and it's a great gathering. Everyone from the Housing Authority is there, the librarians, Parks and Rec, several of the nonprofits, so it's an opportunity for us all to come together and identify challenges and opportunities. Last year, as a result of that meeting, that group, we were able to bring to bear some resources so that families who were living at Champaign Heights and some of the other public housing sites could send their kids to camp for free for at least two weeks during the summer. So the momentum, I think, is continuing around that table to really work together. This past winter, because of that, a lot of us have gotten to know each other a little bit better as well, so Allison Martinez, the ED at Welcome House, and I, the head of Parks and Rec, and the head of library, were able to talk about the growing transient population of folks who didn't have any place to go during the day, who were staying at the overflow shelter or Welcome House, and were showing up at the library and the guild. So there's just a lot more connection between a lot of us as a result of that table as well, so.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving to the next, do we have somebody here from South Shore Center, Gateway Health?
Hi, my name is David Borscher. I'm the manager of community outreach programs at Gateway. Gateway Healthcare's South Shore Division covers all of Washington County, serving a range of people suffering from various emotional and mental health disorders, as well as those abusing substances. Children, adolescents, adults, and people in need of geriatric mental health assessments comprise the majority of the services that we provide to the population here in Washington County. Gateway Healthcare's South Shore Division is the only licensed community mental health center in Washington County, prepared to provide mobile crisis services, specialized community-based outreach, and residential behavioral health services on a twenty-four-hour, seven-day basis. Gateway Healthcare is credited by the Joint Commission, provides a broad range of comprehensive community mental health and vocational services not offered by any other agency in the community, and is designed to assist and treat individuals with complex needs and severe behavioral health illnesses which are not able to be adequately addressed by traditional treatment programs and services. Town contributions are used to support the clinical staffing needed to maintain Gateway's South Shore outpatient care program. Gateway's ability to sustainably care for a significant number of uninsured and underinsured individuals in the communities we serve is contingent upon financial support from the city and town governments where the clients reside. Gateway's committed, I'm sorry, South Kingston residents represent around three to four percent of Gateway's total client population. Over the past twelve months, Gateway clinicians and staff provided three-hundred-and-fifty-four residents of South Kingston with five-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-three care visits regardless of their ability to pay for treatment. Gateway is committed to promoting resiliency and preserving the promise of quality of life for all members of the communities we serve. We cannot achieve this goal alone, so we ask the town of South Kingston for financial support to ensure Gateway retains talented individuals who deliver high-quality care to the residents of South Kingston. On behalf of all Gateway clinicians and staff, and most importantly, the clients we serve, we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on, we have the Welcome House.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Allison Martinez. I'm the new executive director at the Welcome House of South County. For those of you who aren't familiar with Welcome House, we are a provider of homeless services for South Kingstown and Washington County. First and foremost, I want to express sincere gratitude to the council for considering and approving our supplemental request this past fiscal year and helping us with our pilot taxes. That was a great need that we had at the time during some transitions at Welcome House, and it truly was a blessing, so thank you for that. This coming fiscal year, Welcome House asked for ten thousand dollars, and that is for general operating support for our programs. Welcome House has emergency shelter both three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, and we also run a winter shelter that is specifically for the winter months, a five-month program, to meet the dire need during the winter months and the capacity. We also have transitional housing, which is temporary housing program that goes up to twenty-four months for individuals in need that need to transition out of shelter and need that bridge, you know, to get into permanent housing, and we also have permanent housing. This, just in the past eight months, Welcome House provided emergency services in our shelter programs to over one-hundred-and-twenty-four different individuals. We also served nine families, thirty-six single individuals, and twenty-four of South Kingstown's very own children during just the past eight months. We have seen, as Kate had mentioned, the Johnny Cake and Welcome House have been working very closely together because we are seeing a huge increase in the amount of families that are requiring assistance in order to stay in South Kingstown. We are doing everything in our power to meet that need. We have secured just this past year, and we have leased a property with a local landlord to provide six additional beds for individuals needing permanent housing in South Kingstown. So that is something that we are very happy that we engaged in, and we are looking to, you know, create more, I don't know the word, opportunities like that with other landlords in the community so that we can increase the capacity and help those in need so that we can keep people here in South Kingstown. Everybody that goes through our emergency shelter, you know, gets established down here. We work very hard and diligently with them to get the services that they need to turn their life around. Everybody does not want to go through a ninety-day program, do really well, and uproot their lives to, you know, move to Providence or out of state to look for resources in order to continue their progress. So it's really, we're taking that on. Johnny Cake's taking it on. The DV Shelter in South County is taking it on. We're all trying to play a part to keep everybody here so that they can continue to grow their roots, continue to be successful, and meet, you know, the demand that's out there. We are also very proud that we are working very hard to work smarter, not necessarily harder, but smarter, by collaborating with agencies to use existing resources. As the town manager mentioned, I mean, we all have the capacity to take care of different needs. Ours, obviously, is the homeless services. DV specializes in the DV services. Johnny Cake with the basic needs. Education Exchange is somebody else that we're collaborating with to provide, you know, job training. All of us are really coming together to provide wraparound comprehensive services to everybody in the community. There's a dire need for us to collaborate. Everybody's willing to collaborate, and I think, you know, with the support of the council and the town manager, that we will continue to meet the demand, whether it increases, decreases, whatever it may be, we will be here and we'll be a strong force together. So I just appreciate everybody, you know, considering and, you know, pushing forward with our request for the ten thousand dollars this year to support us. Are there any questions?
Was it ten thousand or fifteen that you-
We asked for fifteen. It looks like it's proposed for the ten.
Do that every year. It just goes through level funded, and then I think-
Okay.
...it's to us to decide.
All right, so we did ask for fifteen, and that was, I mean, one program that I didn't mention that some of you may be aware of, we do run a community soup kitchen for the community, which is open right now, just Monday through Friday for lunch. We are, one reason for the extra ask, is that we are trying to expand that. We find a need that there are a lot of people in the community that are coming into the soup kitchen. Just this past fiscal year, we provided over fifteen thousand meals through our small kitchen. We are looking to expand that. We want to start doing dinners for the community. I mean, these are for anybody in the community that's in need of a hot meal. We are also looking to, and I have hired a, you know, full-time kitchen coordinator so that we can start providing more nutritious meals to the people in the community, because that's very important for everybody's health and wellness in order to stabilize and pull everything together. So we are doing those efforts, and I mean, that increase in funding that we did apply for would greatly help us with that effort. So thank you, Liz, for mentioning that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, do we have anybody here from Kane Child Development Center?
Hi, my name's Jesse Pugh. I'm here to represent Kane. I'm on the board of directors at Kane. Lisa DeCarlo, who is the director, couldn't make it tonight. She's doing a CPR training. So I'm with the board of directors. I also have a four-year-old daughter enrolled at Kane now, and my seven-year-old, who's in first grade, went to Kane as well. Kane's been around in the community for decades, a long way back. Probably everyone on the board here or on the council here might, you know, might be familiar with it. We've received funding through the years from the town. I just want to let everyone know, we really appreciate that. We're grateful for the funding in the past. Hopefully, that will happen again this year. We appreciate the consideration for that. Kane offers pretty affordable tuition for the community. Parents that send their children there, some parents pay full tuition, a good amount, also receive assisted tuition. So I think it's valuable to have that option in town here. Kane provides some unique services. They have an in-house kitchen, so parents don't have to worry about breakfast if they don't have time to get breakfast ready for the kids. Lunch is provided as well, just makes it a lot easier on the parents to not have to worry about that through the days, and I know that firsthand, so I don't think I can send my kids anywhere where I'd have to actually make a lunch at this point. So, yeah, the low tuition and the kitchen is- So, yeah, the low tuition and the kitchen is great. Other services, I think, that are unique to Kane in general would be, I think it's, they provide a really diverse environment for the children because of the demographics and, you know, the different incomes. The children are really able to just be in an environment that's really diverse and, I think, beneficial to them. So, that's great. In terms of the funding, it's used for, you know, general operational budget. It lets us keep tuition affordable in general and not have to, you know, we do worry about that, but it's very helpful to kind of have a little buffer there, to use for emergencies, building repairs, all those things you'd expect, really. At this point, we're really not, you know, we get grants from general, different organizations, but this is one that is really useful for us and, just like all the grants are, so we're somewhat dependent on that. And I think, yeah, you know, we appreciate it. We appreciate not just the money, but also the general willingness to provide that money. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All I can say is that I had a child at Kane for a little bit, and I was very impressed with the quality of service, and it is a very diverse group, which is awesome as well.
See Mary Rhoda here? So, Mary, the floor is yours for the Domestic Violence Resource Center.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us all here this evening. My name is Mary Rhoda. I am the director of the Domestic Violence Resource Center, and I've been there for a really, really, really long time. Really long time. So, the Domestic Violence Resource Center is the only agency in Washington County providing a comprehensive range of services for victims specifically of domestic violence and their families. We work collaboratively to offer safety support, advocacy, education, and a network of services to the residents of Washington County. The Domestic Violence Resource Center is dedicated to both preventing and responding to domestic violence by working to change social conditions, beliefs, and actions that perpetrate abuse. Last year, oh, sorry. Last year, we provided over 7,000 services to nearly 1,100 clients. Our helpline received over 1,500 calls. 672 people were women, 85 were children, and approximately one-third of the people we serve on an annual basis are men. We've seen an increase in the community of people 65 and older. We served 194 South Kingston residents. Now, that's individuals. They may have been served 10 times. They may have been served 365 times. That is 18 percent of the population we serve. I think what's missing in that number is the ripple effect of people who are impacted by domestic violence. While we may have served 194 South Kingston residents, the number of people that act impacted is dramatic. Our children are impacted, our taxes are impacted, our police officers are impacted, and our community is not as safe as it could be if we would eliminate domestic violence. We're probably known mostly for our residential program, and I'm really pleased to compliment our, well, some of the other people we work with. This week, we are opening a transitional housing unit in collaboration with Welcome House, and I'm really excited to talk about that cooperation. And as has mentioned, we all work together very closely and collaboratively, and I think that's something South Kingston should be very proud of, is the nature of the camaraderie and cooperation among the nonprofits. A very strong program we have is our helpline program, which is answered 24/7/365, and it's handled by volunteers. So, the money we're asking for this evening is to support our volunteer program. The training that goes into, the people who are our direct first contacts, either in person or on the helpline at our drop-in center, are crucial to allowing us to do the rest of our work. We invest heavily and count on our volunteers. I thought it would be important to mention that this year, unfortunately, we are commemorating our 40th year of being an agency, and our staff strives for the day that we are unemployed and no longer have to address the horrific incidences of domestic violence. You've always been so supportive to our agency, and we appreciate your past support and your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I know that Domestic Resource Center and Violence Center does a fantastic job in this town. You really embrace community, and you reach out to the community, and you do a wonderful job. I'm not, I'm talking about you, but I'm talking about collectively as well. That is our strength. You do a great job. Any other questions?
I just had one quick question. How do you, you said the helpline is 24/7?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, there's not someone physically in the building, or is it more like a, goes through a system where it rings someone's phone?
Ours is open specifically at our agency from 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, but we are part of a 1-800 number statewide for victims of sexual assault and domestic violence that is answered by a person.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Moving on, do we have somebody here from the Education Exchange?
Hi there. I'm Cam Ennis from the Education Exchange. We are also turning 40 this year, along with Mary. Adult education and training. Recently, we've launched programs for oyster farming training, which have been highly successful. Wasn't a complete success the first time, but the second time around, we nailed it. So, now we're at an 80 percent job placement rate. We serve a ton of SK individuals. You can see them walking to our program for, at 9:00 AM, you know, from the public housing community, from Welcome House, from Johnny Cake, from Domestic Violence Resource Center. And without funding these other agencies, I wouldn't be successful, because you can't learn if your basic needs aren't met. You know, if you don't have shelter, or clothing, or you're not safe at home, then you're not going to be able to learn. Last year, we had 77 South Kingston residents. We just got a grant for hospitality training, which we partnered with Welcome House. And so, we're doing the culinary training, which was 14. And we're doing the front-of-the-house training, which is another 14. So, we'll be getting more and more SK residents' jobs through those training programs. We do acuplacer testing, and I don't know if you know this, but in order to go to CCRI, you have to pass the acuplacer, or you'll be placed in remedial class. And the remedial classes are not credit-bearing, and it wastes your Pell Grant. So, at the Education Exchange, you can take the acuplacer, you can fail the acuplacer, and we will not report that score to CCRI and just help you until you pass the acuplacer. We also serve the Alternative Learning Plan students, which are the high school kids, 16 and 17, who aren't just making it in high school and they need a more individualized structure and adult setting. We have great success stories. One of our SK ALP students, I had speak at RIDE the other day. He is working for Representative Langvin, you know, now. So, he's gone on to do great things, and we have a lot of those success stories, just from people who have gotten off the traditional trail and they need a little help, you know, getting back on track. Recently, we had an inmate at Galilee Mission who was released recently and had a long rap sheet, and we took a chance on him, and he succeeded, and now he has a job and he's working and bettering himself. So, we're always there for people who need a little extra support and have lost their way one way or another, but I can't do anything without the support of our other local nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I'm so pleased to see all the successes that you've had recently over the last few years and the changes that you've made, and I think the direction you're going in is wonderful. And I also happened to see you at Wakefield Idol one night when you filled in for somebody.
I do not recall.
Well, that-- So, you're a man of many talents, so.
I was just filling in, you know. Thank you.
I just want to say that I had the chance a couple of weeks ago to visit the Education Exchange while a class was going on, and I actually got to sample some of the products, and it was awesome.
It's great. We had a shucking class.
And it was, you know, there was also, I think, someone there from Department Labor and Training.
Yep. DLT funds that class.
Brian, to go with--
How come we weren't invited to a shucking class?
Well, you're more than welcome to come next time. But I gotta say, like, Ocean Steak Shellfish Cooperative, they donated a bunch of oysters. When chaplains heard we were cooking Big Stuff lobster for the Welcome House dinner, they donated a ton of oysters. So, the whole community really does surround us, and it's heartfelt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a representative for Hope Hospice and Palliative Care?
Hi there. My name's Suzanne Fortier. I'm the vice president of philanthropy for Hope Hospice and Palliative Care Rhode Island. We are the largest hospice provider in the state. We're the second-largest hospice, I mean, second-oldest hospice in the country. We provide hospice and palliative care and extensive bereavement services across the state of Rhode Island. We have about 7,200 patients each year and about 500 patients on service on any given day. We are, we're the major teaching affiliate for Brown Medical School and Hospice and Palliative Medicine, and we are the preferred provider for coastal medical and for Brown medicine. We also have very close ties to South Kingston. Our office on Main Street is where our South Home Team and our South Long-Term Care Team operates from, and we provide a number of grief support services out of that building as well, sometimes two or three a week. And those are all free for anybody in the community who needs them. They don't have to have been, had a family member on our service at all. They can, anyone can come. And we do an annual Light Up a Life event at St. Francis Church down the street, and that is also open to anyone who wants to be part of it. The request this year is for $2,500, and that's to support the programs that are not covered by insurance. So, some patients who are not insured or underinsured, we don't turn them away. We always provide care. And all of the bereavement services that we provide are not covered by insurance, and we provide, you know, wraparound services for 13 months after the loss of a loved one for families in need. Thank you.
Are there any plans to have any beds in town, anywhere, at some point?
Not that I know of. We have an inpatient facility, as you know, in Providence. It has 24 beds, and it's, you know, it's a large capital effort to do that. So, most patients on hospice are at home or in a long-term care facility. So, our teams go out from the office on Main Street, and they're in those homes every single day with, there's physicians, there's nurses, there's hospice aides, there's social workers, chaplains, and we have a huge cadre of volunteers who provide transportation, just companionship, pet therapy, Reiki, massage, music, all kinds of things.
To Brian's point, I had a very close family member that was on hospice care and ended up having to be at the hospital in Providence, and it was, you know, typical Rhode Island fashion. It was like, oh, my gosh, we have to go up to Providence. But the hospital was wonderful, and it had, actually, we saw all of those things in play when we were up there. I mean, there was, there were service animals there. We had different religious cultures represented. There were monks. I mean, it was really amazing to see what you guys did to accommodate families and help them through this process, but it would be so great if there was something in this end of the state, too, because I know, you know, for any kind of advanced medical care, people tend to have to go up to the city, and anything in this part of the state where families, when they need that sort of hospital service, would have that available. It would be great. So--
Local folks being able to spend more time rather than traveling.
Of course, of course.
I would also chime in. We lost a family member three weeks ago. He was under hospice care. The organization was amazing for my family, just amazing.
So nice to hear.
And the quality of life at the end, of course, is not what we would all expect. However, there was comfort, there was compassion, and there was somebody there. Did an amazing job, amazing. I'm very thankful.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Easter Seals of Rhode Island.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jen Martin, and I'm the events manager at Easter Seals. I'm actually here tonight on behalf of Judy Fortier, who lives up north and couldn't stay down for the evening meeting. So, thank you for having me. Easter Seals Rhode Island is right here on Main Street. We provide services for zero-to-three-year-olds, children who might have occupational, physical, or speech therapy needs. We provide the services in the families' homes or at their daycare. For all disabilities is not just one disability. So, all of our services, we typically do receive medical reimbursements, but it's not to the level of keeping the doors open. So, we're looking tonight requesting a grant from the town council, so any consideration would be appreciated.
Jen, just a quick question. So, you're asking for $5,000 this year instead of $2,000 from the previous year? I was just wondering if you have any special plans for the extra money?
To be perfectly honest, Judy didn't even mention how much money we're requesting, so I apologize. I don't actually know.
Totally fine. We all know how to wonder.
I'm sorry. It was a last minute--
I think they requested $5,000 last year, and I don't think we gave them the full amount. Is that correct?
That's true. I know that. Thank you for your time.
And the last is Washington County Coalition for Children. Do we have a representative?
I am. Hi. My name is Loriann Heener, and I am a South Kingston resident and the co-chair for the Washington County Coalition for Children. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak to you about the coalition and the work that we do in the community. And I'm going to try to keep it together, because I'm a very passionate person, and when I talk about kids, I get choked up. Washington County Coalition for Children is a membership coalition of social service agencies, health providers, parents, legislators, town officials, volunteers, and others who advocate on behalf of the region's children. Since 2003, our mission has been to be a voice that advocates for the health and well-being of children and families in Washington County, serving as a catalyst and facilitator for improved services. Some of our accomplishments this past year have included providing adult and youth mental health first-day trainings. It's an eight-hour training that teaches how to recognize and respond to someone experiencing a mental health challenge or crisis. We've held nine trainings this past year, and to date, over 800 people have been trained, including members of the South Kingston Police Department. We've held community data briefings on topics such as teen dating violence, children in fostering kinship care, the realities of food insecurity among families, bullying, prevention, and homelessness. These data briefings events shed light on what is really happening in our community. Our 11th Annual Feeling Groovy Bookmark Project is currently underway for 2018. Last year, over 350 second graders in Washington County participated in this emotional literacy project. Unfortunately, no schools in South Kingston participated last year, but fortunately, two schools are participating this year, and it's West Kingston and Peace Dale. And I brought a few of our, my favorite bookmarks from past years to share with you. Last year, we organized our 15th Annual Children's Issues Forum with a keynote speaker of Dr. Trista Picola, who's the DCIF director, and discussion is currently underway for this year's forum, which will take place in May. Make Bullying a Myth. We completed a recommended reading list for across all grades K through 12, which was distributed to schools and libraries to dispel myths of bullying. And we began development of the Greatest Eight Podcasts, which are eight skills to promote lifelong positive mental health. We packaged 500 welcome baby parcels to be distributed to new moms who are, who deliver at South County Hospital, and we began research for best models for trauma-sensitive schools. The work that the Coalition accomplishes is done by one part-time coordinator and many, many dedicated volunteers. The funds that Washington County Coalition for Children receives through funding from towns such as the town of South Kingston helps to leverage other grant funds by showing local community match. Thank you for your time and attention. Thank you for your time and attention for the town's continued support so we can continue to meet the growing needs of children and families in our community.
I feel your passion, and I'm very proud of you.
Thank you.
Because I know you love what you do. I can tell.
I do, very much so. I do have some materials. Can I share them with you?
Of course.
Lori, I just wanted to say I thought the social-emotional work you're doing for recognizing those issues in young children is especially timely and invaluable in this time. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the outside agencies, do we have any questions, comments, or anything else we need to or would like to add? Seeing none, let's start with, I don't.
Well, actually, I think someone walked in from Tri-County.
You can come up if you have some comments.
If you could come up. And if anyone else, I guess, was.
Well, first of all, thank you for having me, and thank you for your support over the last couple of decades, I believe. I've been in South County since 2000, and we came to South County to assist with some managerial problems that we had. And since that time, 2016, we merged with South County. I'm also the CEO of Tri-Town Community Action Agency. We have about a twenty-five million dollar budget, and we use that budget to try to help people become self-sufficient. And I just want to give you a little general, overall, national background relative to community action. And what I'd like to do is read to you from the actual Act, the Economic Opportunity Act, that started in 1964 under Presidents Johnson's War on Poverty. And this is just an excerpt from that Act. The purpose of the Act is to help states and local communities, working with a network of community action agencies and other neighborhood organizations, to reduce poverty, revitalize low-income communities, and empower low-income families and individuals to become self-sufficient. So we do that by a very diverse programming system within the organization. And in the northern region of our agency now, we run a community health center, a WIC program, and a number of other programs that we don't run in South County region. We call it the Southern Region now. However, that's probably because South County Community Action was, did not come into existence until around 1974. I know I was working at Tri-Town when that happened. I was a little displeased because we had to take a cut, but not really. It was, we, as community action people, we believe in community action in its entirety. I never expected that we would have merged, but we did because I think it was in the best interest of community actions. Originally, in Rhode Island, there were nine community action agencies. We are now down to about seven community action agencies. That's probably because with the reduction in funding, it would just make sense to merge because you do achieve economies of scale when you do merge. Unfortunately, though, for me, for us, for my staff, we cover about half the state of Rhode Island, and there's a number of transportation issues regarding that. But that's as far as I want to go with that. I know I don't have a lot of time, but I thought it was important for you to understand what we do. And we do this through, especially in South County region, Southern region, with our Head Start program. That is a dynamite, first-class education program. And not only Head Start, which is three to five, but Early Head Start, which is from birth to two years of age. And that program, it's not a daycare. It requires, we're obligated and mandated by the feds to have a nutritionist, to have case managers, to have other professionals working within that program. I think over half of our people have bachelor's degrees who are teachers, teacher aides who have associate's degrees. I just wish we'd get more money so that we could be more competitive, so that we could pay these people a little bit more. And Loriann, who just spoke, is on my staff, and all of my people are as committed to her as her to our children. So that really does provide a basis or a foundation so that kids don't fall through the cracks. Then we can go to our GED programs, which is really for eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds, where we do have three classrooms set up throughout the region. And that's very important for us because if they don't make it through high school, for whatever reason, we get them into GED programs. We also do a work experience program where we put them in a nonprofit agency or a profit agency and pay them a minimum wage, or sometimes they do it for free, so that we can move them into permanent employment and make sure that they're self-reliant. So again, that's really, I'm trying to relate these programs back to the mission that I read to you. So I hope you're following me. But I do have a litany of services that I know I gave to you, that I provided, that Tri-County Community Action does programs that we specifically provide in the South Kingstown, town of South Kingstown. And I think we made a mistake on the original sheet because I think I had Joyful Learning Academy, which is a great daycare program that we run out of that main site. It's absolutely fabulous. It's four stars. We're working on five. What we need to do is get more parent involvement. But that program has fifty-four percent low-income or near-low-income kids who participate in it. And our reimbursement from DHS doesn't actually cover our costs. So we are estimating, and some of these numbers, I can't have my accountants run through them exactly, but we calculated that in Joyful Learning, we spend about thirty-three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars in that program alone. Also, for the future, we, I'm very proud to announce that we just won a bid from DCYF for a grant, Family Care Community Partnership Act. We had a strong agency from Warwick that was bidding on that grant, and I thought we might lose it or that we might have to subcontract with them. But fortunately for us, we were able to get that grant fully. We beat, we won. And sometimes when we compete for grants, we have to win. And my staff is highly committed to writing anything and everything. Some of us work sixty hours a week to go after every dollar that we can get. Also, we just through our Community Action Agency State Association, maybe I shouldn't announce this yet. No, it is formal now. We have a RYWORKS grant, which is going to help us get people off welfare. And those people would be the able-bodied people who can work. This will be a very difficult endeavor. We're totally dedicated to it. It probably won't amount to a great deal of money, but at least a couple hundred thousand. And I'm also trying to find a bus to buy transportation because I think, as you all know, there is a huge transportation problem in all of Washington County. So I'm looking forward to that. I'm also working with a charter school in Providence, whose focus is to work with minorities and help them get their, charter school gets their high school diploma, but they want to, they want to work with us and concentrate on Champagne Heights. Their mission is to target minorities and help them get a degree, and a college degree so that they can get into nursing, or LPN, or even maybe a physician assistant program. And we researched that particular agency, and they're a great organization. So I'm hoping that will come to fruition over the next, over the next year. So we have those two items that I think are very big on our agenda for next year. So I don't want to take up too much of your time, but at the end of the day, if you have the sheet in front of you, we have an outlay, and I'll say this is pretty, pretty close, of one million, one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars, that we provide specifically to the town of South Kingstown. And I know that we get a pretty good chunk of money, and once again, I truly appreciate that. We don't ask for more. However, we do pay taxes on a building that's appraised at two million dollars, and I think our taxes are thirty-five thousand dollars. And I've never asked anyone to try to reduce those taxes, and I'm comfortable with that. I know that you have budget constraints, but in any event, that's really the bottom line. I hope, I just, you know, with five minutes, I don't want to go into every detail. But if you have any questions regarding any of our services, I'd be more than happy to respond.
Thank you so much. Does anybody?
Well, thank you very much.
Before we move on, I should ask, is there anybody else from any other human services agencies that have not had the opportunity to speak? Okay, if not, moving on, we will look to outside agencies. Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns, I don't know if somebody else is here. I don't anticipate that. Next, we have, and I know she's here because I saw her, Elizabeth Berman from the Southern Rhode Island Chamber. Yeah, come on down.
Hold on, one second. Rob, do you know what the increase in the requests from the league is about?
It's in our packet. This is their due structure for this year.
Their prior structure, ABLE, was based on the 2000 census. This is updated to the 2010. It will then update once the 2020 is out, and there's also an increase in their per capita fee per person.
Yes, thank you. Hello, my name is Elizabeth Berman. I am the Executive Director of the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce. Thank you so much for hearing us tonight. So I know you all know a great deal about the Chamber. I've been before giving you this show many years. But the mission of the Chamber is to support and enhance the business community of Southern Rhode Island and to create opportunities for the growth and development of our member business. A Chamber of Commerce in general achieves collectively what no one business can do alone, and that's what we are. We are a collection of business. Oh, are you okay?
All right.
Would you like me to wait?
I think her intention was for you to continue, so I'll go with that.
Okay. So yes, a Chamber achieves collectively what no one business could achieve alone. We implement our mission in a number of different ways, through networking opportunities for our members and continuing education, just to name a few. We are celebrating our eighty-fifth anniversary this year. The Chamber was incorporated in 1933. So we will be turning eighty-five this year, which we are very excited about. So you'll be seeing some, some history from the Chamber coming out over the next couple of months as we gear up for that anniversary party. What the money that we receive from the town does help immensely towards our mission, specifically in our increased hours in the summer to serve the increased number of tourists that we have coming through our beautiful community. Also, to help us with our gift certificate program, which costs nothing for any business to participate in, and it helps us to keep money local, keeps money right here in our town, which we sell thousands of those every year, which is always really great to see. We have around five hundred and fifty members. Majority of our membership does come from South Kingstown. And again, I know you do know a lot about the Chamber as I've interacted with all of you over the years, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I just think you've got the best introduction.
I hope you're okay, Meg.
Oh, no worries.
Liz, other than money, what other things could the town do to help?
Oh, do you, I mean, it's snowing outside, Bryant. Do you really want to go down to the? Well, I mean, I gotta say, I think, I think we're incredibly lucky to have such a great relationship with the town of South Kingstown. And Rob, as our new town manager, has already reached out in a number of different ways, and I think that we will be working together in a number of different ways moving forward, hopefully with the Main Street Grant and a few other programs that we will be working on. I was very excited to hear the EDC looking at the Commercial Highway District, so I think that there's a lot of opportunity there for some very smart growth within our town. So I'm really looking forward to what that will bring. Thank you.
And is anybody here to present the parades for the celebration? Union Fire District, that would be part of that. And next up, we have Wakefield Village Association.
My name is Kenneth Tetzner. I'm the President of the Wakefield Village Association. Let me fix that for you, Liz. It happens every time. I don't get it. I am. So again, my name is Kenneth Tetzner. I'm the President of the Wakefield Village Association. We're made up of all volunteers. We have no paid employees. We're a nonprofit. Last year, we put on many events that we give back to the community. We also use these events with the help from you, the money that you give us, to make more money so that we can put on more events. Last year, we also paid for a trolley so when we had these events, we could move people around as far as parking. And also, we sent a trolley from our Winter Wonderland Event to the Champagne Heights to pick up kids so they could join in the festivities. That's one of our really big givebacks to the community is the Winter Wonderland after we struggled through the Oktoberfest, which we brought, we're estimating around five thousand people to the downtown area. So basically, what we do is, I think I've seen you all at many of our events, and we like to work with the town to help beautify Main Street. We do Thursday nights. We do the Riverfire. We're trying to bring more attention to the Sagatucket. I know we're collaborating with the town right now and the EDC, and you guys were nice enough to help clean up the river a little, the embankment, and you guys are working towards that, so we really appreciate that. We just, basically, we appreciate everything you can do to help us, and our goal is to try to, you know, we call it Wakefield Village. We feel like it's about the people and the community, and that's basically what we work for. This year, we asked for level funding with the five thousand, but we're also asking for a one-time increase of three thousand. You guys already gave us five thousand in the past for the Riverfire baskets. That program and that event has built up. We have many vendors that are interested now that reach out to us that want to line the street and join in the festivities. We have live music every week, and basically, the boat that we're using is very unsafe. Right now, it's leaking. The guys can't even row it. The oar locks are broken. You can't get the oars in it. And it's just a lot of work trying to move around that river on that boat, and it's to the point now where I just don't feel safe putting those guys out there in that boat. So we're asking for some help there. If you could give us three thousand, we'd like to purchase a new boat for safety. And also, it's part of the show. The boat's a pretty ratty-looking boat. We spent all that money on the Riverfire baskets, so we'd like to kind of upgrade that as well.
And how much is a new boat?
We're estimating around three thousand. We're estimating around three thousand, it could be more, but if we can get three thousand from you, we'll, we're always trying to raise money, not just ask for money, we have a golf tournament coming up that we, we had last year that filled up and was very successful, and that was kind of our kickoff to the new season of our events, so, you know, we need, we need money to raise money, kind of, kind of deal, and we, we have a lot of overhead as well, you know, insurance and stuff like that, so basically, that's, that's what we're working towards. So if you, you know, would consider giving us three thousand for the boat, we'll pick up the rest of the, the rest of the bill by raising money.
Ken, can you give us an idea of how much, I know that in my involvement with it, you guys fundraised for most of the events, can you give us an idea of the cost of some of these events, and how much you've raised to cover it and break even, if not make a profit on some of these?
Yeah. Our biggest event is the Oktoberfest, we actually partnered up with URI, they brought down their big band and filled the stage, but we also have to pay for the other bands that we have that night, and all the entertainment, so that, that approximately, I can't give you the definite number, but it's about fifteen thousand dollars to throw that one event, and we actually come out positive, I think we raised a little more than eight thousand this year with that event, and we use that money to put towards the other events. We don't charge, every event is free, we ask for an in-kind donation, we don't want to put the pressure on the community that they need to pay. People were kind enough to, to give some money at the door, we also had vendors, I think we had almost eighty last year. If you recall, this started off as Festival Fett, we took it over, and the reason we took it over was to make it bigger, better for downtown, but also to raise money instead of just, we used to just pay for that. So the, the other event that we did was the Luau, the summer event in August, that was a new event we did last year. I'd say roughly, that cost us a little more than five thousand, and at the end of the day, we raised, after we paid for everything, we raised about five thousand. And we use that money to give back, like the Halloween parade, that's a free thing, we had a line all the way from the end of the bridge, all the way to the street, to High Street, that's how many kids, we, we estimate at least five hundred kids this year, so that thing is just growing and growing every year. And it's the community, the community really likes what we do, and we're giving back, and we're trying to bring a lot of attention to downtown, and hopefully, it's working. All good? Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Mary Kathleen, or M.K. Whitten, and I'm here from SKPP. I'd like to start by thanking you for your continued support, I know many of you have been a part of our community coalition, and we're always excited to see you at our events, so thank you. I'd like to start off by saying that these funds that are unrestricted from the town are vital to our organization, as we do have grant restrictions for programs that we can put on. I've provided you with some of our most recent initiatives that we put on in both the school and the community as a whole. Currently, we are focusing with community partners such as you to create our town strategic plan in order to address the current opioid epidemic that we know we are facing in Rhode Island, and these unrestricted funds would be vital to us as grant monies are not readily available to implement the plan that the state would like each town to create, so we are looking for that. Some of the educational materials that you can find in your folders, we supply to South County Hospital and Thunder Miss, especially in our elementary schools, we started initiatives to provide more mental health support as prevention, we have started a mindfulness kick in the elementary schools, we are really looking to provide more coping skills to our students before they reach transitions, as they go on to junior high and high school, where we know they are more at risk for substance abuse. So thanks to your funds that we have received from the town, we are able to really take a solid mental health approach to prevention, which we appreciate. We have a community campaign, I'm sure you may have seen our Count It, Lock It, Drop It logo that is everywhere, this is primarily to focus on the non-prescription use of medications, we partner with our Green Line Pharmacy currently to Apothecary, sorry, to provide lockbags to anybody coming in that is receiving a opioid prescription, and we are trying to safeguard both our youth and adults with this, and we will continue to do so. And we are also going to be partnering, hopefully, with CBS to advertise, I don't know if you've seen, they did put a med safety return box in our Wakefield location, so we'll be working with them to advertise that. And we are very strongly working to address the vaping issues that we are seeing in our schools, multi-prock approach, we are definitely working on educating students to the dangers of vaping. We don't have a lot of curriculum in the schools, but we are able to secure that with funding, and we are working very hard to speak to adults about these issues and educate parents as well. Heidi was supposed to be at a PTO meeting this evening, in fact, educating on that, but they have canceled after-school activities, so we will continue on with that. But basically, you know, we are really looking to you for the continued support so that we can continue to address all the issues that we face in the town of South Kingstown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I've been going to a lot of their meetings, and the last one, Rob was there as well, and there's a lot of initiatives, but it's really going to come down to the local governments stepping in and helping them. I think there's a, the, the grant that we're working on, is it the Code Grant? That's money that is a grant to come up with a program, but yet, there's no money to fund the program at this point.
Right. The, the monetary amount that we are given to come up with this plan in the community really is not going to cover what it will cost to implement it in our community, and we're not the only town that's facing that problem, but again, you know, we are a grant-funded organization, but they're very specific in what they will allow us to allocate our funding for, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a representative from Southern Rhode Island Volunteers?
We skipped Peastale.
Oh, did I? Oh, I'm sorry, Peastale Neighborhood Revitalization.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I skipped.
That's all right, I needed the exercise.
Peastale Neighborhood Revitalization.
Hello, I'm Therese Martin from Peastale Neighborhood Revitalization, and I would like to thank Ken Tetzner for basically giving my presentation. Everything he said just put Peastale in where Wakefield was. So our, our mission is to revitalize, protect, and improve the quality of life in Peastale by expanding economic opportunity and housing availability for local residents, advocating for alternative transportation, preserving Peastale's historic, cultural, and natural resources, and promoting smart growth and sustainable living practices. That's a really broad mission for a group that doesn't have any paid staff, and doesn't have a social worker on staff. So the group has gone through many iterations over the past, like fifteen, eighteen years. As I'm sure you guys know, you know, in the past, there was a lot of property owners on the board, and they, they were, you know, their business was booming, they had gotten a community block grant and done facade improvements, and then there were several years where there was really no activity, and in the last four or so, we've sort of started to blossom again. We have a lot of, almost primarily, business owners, Peastale business owners on the board, so we've sort of evolved into our function being, you know, beautification down there, reaching out to the Housing Authority residents, working sort of as liaison with the business owners, and getting people to the village, which is really the function of the events that we throw, getting people down to see how nice it is. Peastale's got a reputation problem, we're always trying to work on that. So even in years when this group has been very inactive, we, we estimate that it's like a two thousand dollar annual cost just to, to be, you know, insurance, have a website, basics like that, some office supplies, things like that. But in year, in the last few years when we've gotten more active, we feel that we, we do a lot with a little, you know, three or four thousand dollars we use to throw several events, ideally, generate that money right back, that's what we use for the next event. The businesses all have fantastic results from those events, and the people in the neighborhood really enjoy them, and it gets people from outside of Peastale who would normally not come to the village. So we really appreciate the town's support.
Therese, what, what do you have planned for this year? I know there's some new businesses in Peastale, and this past year, I know you did the, the Christmas tree lighting, and helped with the, the Peastale Art Festival, or I don't remember what that's called, the thing at the Peastale School that they have the same day, so I was just wondering what other plans for activities did you have?
I'm not a hundred percent sure we're going to do the block party, I hope we are, I've got to get more firm commitments of help. I can't overburden myself the way that I have personally in the last few years. We did also do a Mother's Day event last year for the first time, and that was really successful. We worked with Hera Gallery, set a fundraising goal, and exceeded it. We did, it was, it was music and art at the Pump House Music Works, and with donations at the door and raffle sales, we were able to exceed the goal, handed off the money to Hera, they're going to use it to repair the world's smallest art gallery and get that going again, that's been leaking, they haven't been able to, to put art in, in a few years, so.
And then, do you know the status of the bus stop project?
Yep, that is sort of reactivated in the last few weeks, I've communicated with Amy Reiner in the town manager's office and Ripta, and we're, we're back in action.
Okay.
Yep.
Moving forward, Southern Rhode Island Volunteers. Hi, how are you?
I'm good. My name's Deb Tanner, and I'm a South Kingstown resident, and when I am working, I'm the Executive Director of Southern Rhode Island Volunteers, I am currently on a medical leave, and as Mary said, she'd been with the Domestic Violence Resource Center for many years, I now qualify for services at SRIV as a senior, so if I need a ride to a doctor, that might be a benefit for me. Our agency's mission is one of service. We started thirty-seven years ago here in South Kingstown, it was a thesis of a URI student that there were a lot of seniors who had skills and talents to use within the community, but there wasn't an outlet. So we started in Kingston, we ended up in South Kingstown at the Senior Center, where we still have a tiny office over there, and our main office is now in Charlestown in the Senior Center on the second floor there. Simply, it's one of, of space, and that's why we're in the middle of Charlestown. We do serve a third of the state of Rhode Island, all of Washington County, East and West Greenwich, and Jamestown. Our programs are only three, our volunteer program, which is the only one we get some federal funding for, we receive a forty thousand dollar grant for the Retired Senior Volunteer Program, you have to be fifty-five years of age or over to qualify for that, but if you are thirteen and over, you can volunteer with our agency. We are the only RSVP that is in a private nonprofit in the state of Rhode Island, the other six agents, entities are in the northern part of the state, and they all serve that part of the area. We also have a, what was our original signature program, we continue to this day, which is the one that you guys helped to fund, and that is our independent aging program. We all know how critical transportation is, that's a vital service that we provide, we transport any citizen that lives within our service area to any medical healthcare provider anywhere in the state of Rhode Island. That includes veterans who need to go to Middletown, Newport, and Providence, and most of the time, I'm the one who drives them, because it's harder to get people to drive to Providence for appointments. I did, right, get some stats from the staff, and I will share those with you, and I apologize for not being on my game, being out on a medical leave myself, but we transported two-hundred and four South Kingstown residents in the last twelve months. For those individuals, there were four-hundred and thirty-five transportations. We average usually for South Kingstown residents about three-hundred transports to healthcare providers, and that can be anything from the doctor's or therapy kind of appointment. We also provided six-hundred and forty-four visits to our frail homebound elders, there were fourteen South Kingstown residents who received those visits, that was thirteen hundred hours of companionship and visitation to help alleviate the isolation of living in our rural area. And then, one of the things that's really important to independent aging, as well as the transportation and access, is nutrition and food, food security. We deliver to thirty-four South Kingstown residents Meals on Wheels Monday through Thursday, but it is meals for five days, on Thursday, they get two meals. If we have storms and we have to, to figure out how to still get the meals, we'll deliver double meals, and we do that with Meals on Wheels. The meals come into the Senior Center here in South Kingstown, and we disperse them from there, we manage that entire program. I went through Food Safety Certification Program to make sure that we are ensuring that what is our seniors are receiving is appropriate, because it comes in from a caterer, and we want to make sure everybody's safe and everything's okay. To South Kingstown residents, we, in the last twelve-month period, it was a hundred and seventy meals per week, or eighty, eight thousand, eight hundred and forty meals. The year before, it was eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine meals, but that's a fluctuating number, the clients aren't really, they're not our clients, they're Meals on Wheels of Rhode Island clients, so they put them on and off, and one of the things that we noticed with the program was that a lot of people were coming off of Meals on Wheels, so Kate was mentioning the deliveries from Johnny Cake Center, we do that. We manage that entire delivery service for the homebound seniors of food from the Johnny Cake Center here in Peastale every Friday. Two to three of our volunteers show up, we schedule them, we make sure we cover them, they go, they pick up the bags of groceries, they bring them to the homebound seniors. In the last year, we brought two thousand, six hundred and forty bags to homebound seniors in South Kingstown for a total of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred pounds of food. All the food in the world does no good for anybody if it sits on a shelf and doesn't get in the hands of the person in need. I am extremely passionate about serving our seniors, most agencies don't. Our seniors tend to be the forgotten population, but if we're going to be a great nation, we have to remember the elderly as well as our young. You know, and I say that knowing that we have to take care of everyone in need, I'm a grandma, I love children, but I also love our elderly, and I, I love that for eighteen years, I've had the privilege of serving that population, that far too often, we forget. Some of the stats, just if you're interested, the sixty-five-plus population, based on the United States Census for Washington County, because it's done by county, between two thousand and two thousand and ten, our county grew by two-point-nine percent total. Between two thousand and ten and two thousand and fourteen, the sixty-five-plus population grew by two-point-nine percent. We're in trouble. We got a lot of aging people, and we're not putting enough emphasis on what they need. Joe and I now sit on the South Kingstown Narragansett Senior Advisory Committee, where we have conversations all the time about the issues in transportation and nutrition and stuff, and hopefully, we'll get to some creative ways to take care of that. We only ask for two thousand dollars in financial funding, because you do give us a small office in South Kingstown, and as a resident, it's really important to me that there's a footprint for our agency here in our town where everything began, so we appreciate all of that. Our annual budget, just so you know, is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, forty thousand comes from the federal government, zero comes from the state of Rhode Island with exception of Senator Zasnowski, who provides a two thousand dollar grant to help us here in South Kingstown. The rest of that money, I raise through grants, and then my board has one fundraiser, it happens at Old Mountain Lane, it was last Sunday, and I'm happy to say we raised ten thousand dollars to support our seniors. Thank you.
I just want to point out that every time someone tonight said senior, they looked at me, but you're the only one who said my name.
We're there to...
I just want to point out that every time someone tonight said "senior," they looked at me, but you're the only one who said my name.
We're there together, Joe.
Thank you so much. Move on Narrow River.
Good evening. My name's Richard Grant. I'm president of the Narrow River Preservation Association, and our coordinator is Allison Cates, and she will join me and answer some questions and give you a few details which will make this more interesting. The major point we're trying to make is that we would like the town of South Kingstown to share more in the cost of water testing in the Narrow River. And so we'd like to see the amount raised from the amount that's on the board of $500 to $1,950, which is one-third of the cost of the water testing. And I'll just go on with the overview of NRPA for people that haven't heard this before, but I know that others have heard it for not 47 years that I've been on the board, but for a great number of years. The Narrow River flows through a vital watershed located in North Kingston, South Kingston, and Narragansett. The Narrow River Preservation Association NRPA has been in existence since 1970 with the goal of preserving, protecting, and restoring the natural environment and the quality of life within the watershed. In the past, each town has appropriated contribution to support the water testing that has an accessible database online from its 27 years of history of maintaining 14 sites. The data shows the water quality has improved. The sites are manned by volunteers, like 35 people a year test the water. In the past, the towns have contributed to cover some of the URI watershed testing costs. The contribution from each town originally was $2,700. NRPA is requesting a contribution of, as I said, $1,950. NRPA has worked with the federal and state agencies that have recently finished two sizable programs to improve conditions in the watershed. The planting of 35,000 seedlings was accomplished by NRPA for U.S. Fish and Wildlife. Allison managed that program, and 225 people volunteered to do the planting. At the present time, NRPA is working with the three towns on the BMP program, direct flow pipes into the river. NRPA accomplishments are sent once a year to 3,300 residents and Friends of Narrow River. We also report on the land, education, and water programs to the public. Since NRPA became a state agency, the greatest benefit is to be aware of every program that has a link to the Narrow River watershed. It just helps us when we know what's going on to offer our support. It boils down to just making our budget work. So we are hoping that you will contribute more this year. I would like to turn this over to Allison, NRPA coordinator, that will answer any questions you have. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Allison. Did you have any questions?
The testing that you folks do is required testing that the towns are responsible for? Do I understand that?
No, it's a voluntary water testing program that we started in 1991. There are required state, there are state requirements for testing at recreational beaches. That's not what we're doing. We're through the Watershed Watch Program at University of Rhode Island. They do all our volunteer training, and then twice a month, so every other week, a volunteer goes to one of 14 sites. They work out the schedule based on where they live, what's convenient for them. Some of the sites are accessible by a dock. Others, you have to get in a boat and go follow the GPS coordinates and find your site. They take samples of salinity, water temperature, oxygenation, things like that. And then they also, six times a year at each site, take samples that they then send to the URI Watershed Watch Lab, and those are assessed for things like nutrients, bacteria, all these different measures so that they can determine what the health of the river is. And the sites, there are 14 sites. Five of them are right on the South Kingstown-Narragansett line, and it really, it's really a measurement of the health of the water. We have seen improvement over time. We also have a couple of locations that we're digging into to find out why they have higher bacteria counts than others. A couple of our board members have been meeting with John Shock in your engineering department to talk about stormwater abatement along Middle Bridge on the South Kingstown side as the land slopes down and feeds into the river. And we're really excited to be working on that, and we're talking about getting some NRPA, longtime NRPA supporters, to maybe plant a rain garden as a pilot project so that other residents can see how easy and accessible it is. And we feel like if you guys are going to invest the money to put in these stormwater abatement projects, it would be great to continue the water testing to be sure that everything is healthy. And we're happy to do that. We have a volunteer coordinator. All the water testers are volunteers. We're happy to continue doing that, but we would like more support if possible. We appreciate the support you've given us, but we really appreciate more support.
Great.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else from outside agencies that should stick up to the podium?
I might be a very outside agency. My name is Mary Gail Smith, and I'm a volunteer for Neighbors Helping Neighbors Rhode Island. And I want to thank the town manager and the council for giving me a chance to tell you more about what we're doing. Neighbors Helping Neighbors is 100% volunteer organization, having as its mission keeping low-income qualifying South County families in their homes, and it's a way of combating homelessness. And we've been nonprofit for seven years now, and we've done a lot of work in South Kingstown with our No Cost Home Repairs to South Kingstown residents. And the kinds of people that we've helped in South Kingstown have included people with disabilities, and I'm going to look right over here and say seniors, single parents, seasonal workers who are particularly vulnerable when it's not the season for their work. And we've also helped a number of returning veterans. So some of the projects that we have done in South Kingstown have included, and you know, I do painting. That's about all I'm good for, but we have removed siding from a house and repainted it, recited it, repainted it. We tore a broken decrepit porch off the side of a house so that an elderly woman could have a second means of entrance and exit into the property. The number of projects that we've done in South Kingstown represent 14% of our budget, and that's about the same as Charlestown and North Kingstown, both of whom, both of those towns support us in the area of $1,000 a year. And we're really excited this year because we have an anonymous generous donor that they won't even tell me the name because I'm not to be trusted. I might use it for some other group, you know, like the Women's Club. But we have a generous anonymous donor that we encountered when he saw a program that Jim Hummel did about Neighbors Helping Neighbors on Rhode Island PBS. And this generous anonymous donor has agreed to a dollar-for-dollar match for every dollar that we raise this year. So if you could see your way clear to supporting us at the $1,000 level, we would actually receive $2,000, should be doubling your money, and that money would be put aside specifically for projects in South Kingstown, and we would be buying building materials with that. The donor last year supported us for administrative costs, so we're pretty excited about this. So we can't do the work without you, and I'm new to these kinds of charts. So when you talked earlier about this being a level funding process, and I'm sitting here listening to people talk about their organizations, it sounded to me as if you were, if you were going to fund Neighbors Helping Neighbors Rhode Island, that those funds would be taken away from someone else. Not the case? Not necessarily? All right, all right. Because I, that makes me feel kind of funny when I hear, you know, the great need. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Yeah, just, I want to caution you not to feel that way at all.
Okay.
When the town staff give us this sort of spreadsheet, they level fund everybody so that we can decide who we want to give increases to or who we don't want to give increases to. So you wouldn't certainly be taking from anybody necessarily at all. I just had a question. You said you serve North Kingstown, Charlestown, and South Kingstown for your program?
We serve all of South County.
Okay.
I was speaking of the towns that support us financially.
Okay.
Now, we have done projects in every single town, and, you know, some of the bigger ones have included roofs, and we too are dealing with an aging population in our volunteers. So Roger, who's been with us since the beginning, has said the other day he's done his last roof, you know, because he's getting older. So in the event that we would have another roof come up right away, we're going to have to engage a roofer. When we have plumbing that needs to be done, we have to have a licensed plumber. I mean, there's no two ways about that. But we get them to, you know, give us a project a year on, you know, volunteer basis, so it helps. And the people that we help are extremely appreciative. This one lady that we did a wheelchair ramp for said, you know, that she was quite touched that we had helped her, and she said, "You helped me, and you didn't even know me." So anyway, thank you.
Mary, do you work with the HomeRep program? You sound so familiar to me. Were you here last year at all, or?
I was here last year, and I don't know, I don't know HomeRep.
Okay.
I was here for Neighbors Helping Neighbors Rhode Island, and then I sometimes have another hat, Friends of Green Hill Pond.
Oh, that's right.
You know, so, see you on the pond.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anybody else that is interested in talking for outside agencies?
I can speak briefly about the Washington County Regional Planning Council, if that's all right, because they intentionally did not send in a request for funding. I didn't know. I think they were supposed to send in a letter saying they didn't want funding this year. I serve on the board of that, so that's why I'm going to speak about it. Essentially, they've created the Street Lake Program, PRISM, which is providing enough of a revenue stream that they don't need to seek funds from us to sort of pay for the overhead of the organization at this point. And they're sort of without a mission for the towns at this point. I think if we come up with some new project to work on, we may come back, they may come back next year with a request for funding, but they thought it would be appropriate not to ask for it this year, and hopefully have that money available for their good causes.
Great. And there's another example of a changing relationship. The Washington County Community Development Corporation, as you know, we've entered into a contractual relationship with that organization. They're now doing our CDBG grant management. So the relationship hasn't fallen away. It's just changed. Seeing no more questions or no more comments, we shall move on to public safety accounts. Sit down. We'll talk about, talk about your divisions first, and then we'll move on. You're up last, actually, Craig. You go, Joe.
So tonight, we'll be talking about the public safety program, specifically the police sworn officers, civilians, and the dispatchers. Tax support required is $8,760,651. They have an overall increase of 2.9% in their expenditure budget. Overall, their wages are up 1.9%, which is a net effect of some retirements, resignations, and full year funding of a police sergeant that was budgeted for January 1st, 2018. So fiscally, 2019 is a full year of funding for that police sergeant. Their benefits are up consistently about 5.1%. Commodities, 5.1% as well. Their revenue overview, they will be, we've budgeted $325,469 in revenues, which is a slight increase over the prior year of $4,689. The types of revenues that the police department receives are the fines, fees, and details, admin fee, and vehicle use. So any questions, the chief and Jackie? Do you have any details, Joe and Jackie, that you want to address?
That makes a big difference.
Chief, how's the new position working out with the new detective sergeant?
Very good.
It's helping out with the?
Trevor Richmond, who was a detective previously, he's now a sergeant. Is he every day?
Do we still have any detectives on loan?
Yes.
I, no, you finish. You finish.
I would just say that detective on loan is probably responsible for $200,000 that we will spend on items that the town taxpayers don't have in federal forfeiture and state forfeiture.
Have made a significant impact in terms of cost of loss.
Yes.
I think I remember our town manager talking about forming a new sort of coalition with the superintendent and URI and different public safety aspects. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Well, I don't think we've had an opportunity to talk about that, but.
We haven't totally briefed on it. It's a meeting that I held with, had with the public safety director up at URI. The idea is that URI, the fire districts, public safety agencies that are part of the town organization, really don't have a forum where we do strategic long-term thinking, long-term planning. There's a lot of sort of on-the-ground activity. There's a lot of interaction on sort of operational stuff, but there's not the sort of step back and think about, you know, what are the growth patterns for public safety over the next five, the next 10, the next 15 years? That organization is one that URI has an interest in, sort of putting together, pulling together, and I think there's a good, a good place for us to be in that conversation. together, and I think there's a good place for us to be in that conversation.
I had just one more comment. I had a conversation with somebody on the school committee recently just about safety around our schools. And he said that, you know, in seeing some of the things that have happened in Parkland and other places in the country, he felt we were extremely fortunate in South Kingstown because we have so many safeguards in place that people don't even realize, where he thinks a lot of those tragedies would be prevented in a community like ours. And that's not to say that it couldn't happen here. But I just wanted to recognize how important it is and how proactive our police department and our school department is in sort of planning and training and always preparing for the worst, but hopefully never having to deal with it. So I think that's incredible in what you do with what you have, and we're just really lucky to have that.
Thank you.
I was going to piggyback off that a little bit, but I guess in light of all of the, it's everywhere, but a couple of tragic recent situations in our community with opioid addiction and heroin addiction, which I guess is on the rise. I don't even really know much about that stuff, but is every officer equipped with Narcan if there is a situation they have to respond to?
Yes, they have responded, and they've actually saved a couple of people getting there first. Usually EMS is there. They do, they follow up, but there have been certain instances where the police officers, they respond to every medical call, and they have saved a couple of people with Narcan. And they're all trained, and they're trained annually, every one or two years, they're trained in the Narcan.
I think that's really important. I mean, just in the last three weeks, we've had, what, three? Young population had heroin addictions within the last week or two.
Yes, we have. We probably have a couple a week.
That's... I just wanted to make sure if the police were responding, I'm sure the 911 responders are there too, but if they do get there in time and the police are there, that everybody was equipped with Narcan because I think it's very important.
Yes.
It's been going on.
They are. And we were one of the few last year to start carrying the Narcan. Also, we had a police officer, I have to brag a little bit, a couple of days ago, we had a cardiac situation, and two of our officers were there first and started CPR prior to EMS, just because of the location the officers were in, the area where EMS has to leave from.
So got it.
And that person, I think I heard, was being released from the hospital.
We are, as the council is aware, you approved, and we've joined this litigation to see if we can recoup some of the costs involved. And the Narcan dosages are not inexpensive. Eighty-three dollars a dose, and they don't have a long shelf life. So they have to be refreshed quite often. The training is an expense. There are a number of expenses that we're incurring because of the current situation we and everyone else finds themselves in because of the actions of those who were pushing medications without thinking about the consequences downstream.
On Meg's comments about Narcan, I'm just wondering if, I lost my train of thought. That's what happens when you have three of these meetings in a row. It'll come back to me.
You want me to go and you can think about it?
Yeah, you go for that.
Okay. So one of the questions I was going to ask, and you may not have the information, but I think it would be good for the council to know, you know, we talk about potentially a couple of overdoses per week in town.
I was just guessing.
Okay. No, but I'm just, okay.
No, it won't be on record.
No, but I mean, I think the other number I think that we really need to know is, because sometimes we really don't talk about it, but it would be really good to know through the police department or EMS how many actual overdoses there that we have that result in death in our town. You know, we're trying to deal with this opioid crisis and other drugs that are going on, but it would be really good so that we can realize how important that is to our overall community and maybe put more effort towards prevention and treatment.
Yes, I'm not sure about those stats. I don't know if EMS director has those. We have the problem with the HIPAA rules.
Right.
So we have to cautious.
I remember what I was going to say now. I know in other communities, they've started opioid programs where people can come to the police departments and churn in, you know, paraphernalia or drug stuff that they have without facing any consequences as far as, you know, criminally arresting them or something. I was just wondering if we have any sort of protocol at our police station if an addict did want to come and pointed towards resources or, you know, how somebody could, you know, show up at the police department and receive help?
They could show up there, and although we don't have the facilities to treat them there, we would, we always have agencies, different agencies that we can refer them to, which does happen.
CVS and Wakefield actually just announced that they are having...
The drop box, but...
Drop off.
Drop box, but the police department does have a drop box.
Right, no, I knew that, but...
They have the drop off times of year as well.
I wish there was something we could do, and it's not necessarily the police department's job, but to be more proactive in the opioid crisis, because it seems like we hear about it when it's too late or, you know, we hear about people being arrested for different things. And I'm not sure if there's opportunities for more collaboration with, you know, the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention or other organizations, but I just, I hope, and I'm sure you guys are doing everything you can, but I hope as a community we can be as proactive as possible because it is a crisis. When you talk about a few people a week overdosing, I mean, that's, it's just, it's an epidemic, and it's so sad, and it doesn't seem like it's being curbed. And I don't know how we do it. I don't have the answers, but I would certainly be open to any initiatives that would be a little more proactive in attacking that.
I agree.
I will point out that the drop box at CVS was a result of Partnership for Prevention reaching out to CVS. And the design, and I don't know what the ultimate program design has ended up being, but the design was that the drop box would be at CVS, and because we at the police department have been handling a disposal, we'd be coordinating with the CVS to do that.
Help dispose, yeah.
I don't know exactly how that ended up being, you know, structured, but that was the original intent.
One of the things that came out of one of the SKPP meetings was there's a company that comes and takes the drugs and disposes of them, but we're not sure who actually pays for that. So I guess it would just be, you know, looking into maybe finding out who actually pays for it and see how we can fund that and making sure it's getting funded.
I have, Joe, I have no questions. The presentation is crystal clear. I'd like to echo what others have said, though, very happy with the performance, and I hear great things from the community as well about our department.
Thank you.
I do. I do, because unfortunately firsthand, I hear it all the time. But you guys do a great job. You're awesome.
Especially during these storms.
We have great people and, you know, I have to give them the credit. Civilians, dispatchers, police officers, fire department, we're all just great people to work with. And we've really been tested the last entire winter. We've had so many storms, and there were times when they had just riled out straight.
Dispatchers are wonderful, though. Like first site, first year, first gun.
They do a great job.
Oh, they're unbelievably, they're so great in the public.
We're fortunate to have those people.
Very blessed.
Just one more follow-up question. Where are we with the accreditation process?
Right now, because of the shortage, we've been down about nine of 10 people. It's been very difficult for Patricia Sergeant Gardner to stay full-time on that. So we're probably around 40%, and we're working on another 40% that we would complete and present to you as standing orders. A lot of work. It definitely requires a full-time police officer to do that, and we haven't been, with the manpower, we haven't been able to do that. Other departments have put someone in a room and one or two people and had them do that full-time. So I'm trying, I'm working toward that as people come off of training. I'm trying to put one person in charge of accreditation only, but it's difficult.
Yeah.
When you say that you're down nine, is that retirement and disability?
Really, retirement of training officers. Usually, we have nine of 10. We would, nine of 10 people. We just had two officers come off training, so they will help man staff the patrol shifts. So I'm trying to free up one sergeant for certification. We have a unique situation where we have to prepare it for the standing orders for the town. Other departments don't have that extra step, so we have to make sure they're perfect before we send them over here.
Oh, come on, we're an easy audience.
I'm actually very comfortable with your proposed increase based on the safety of our town. We have 31,000, if you will, residents, and for the protection that we all come to expect and come to want and come to desire, I'm very comfortable with the budget as you have presented it to us.
That's great. I have to credit Jackie for a lot of that.
Thank you.
To keep a check on us.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you. And I'm glad you're feeling better. So good to see you back.
There's a long road.
Yeah.
Not used to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up, we have animal control, the road shelter division. Tax support required for this division is $273,000. Expenditures are up overall 2.8%, basically associated with COLA increases and minimum wage adjustments. Benefits are up 8.3%, again, consistent with budgeted healthcare increases. And their revenues are proposed at $76,900. The types of fees that they receive are just dog fines, fees, and we receive $70,500 support from Narragansett. Anne Marie is here. She always likes to have her spotlight.
I like... She talks. Yeah. I'm Anne Marie, and I'm the animal shelter manager. And if you guys have any questions, I'm here to ask, answer them.
I hate going up there because I always want to adopt another...
Well, most people say that. It just, I don't think anybody has to worry about that when they stop by.
I love your stories on social media when you, especially during a storm, when you're at the shelter for a long time. Oh, my goodness, some of those pets you have in there are just adorable.
Yeah, they're not really keen on these storms.
I can't...
That last one, they weren't keen on it at all with the winds going around.
Oh.
And then that tree fell behind the shelter, too.
Oh, no.
It took down the power lines, and I know they had to replace one of the poles back there.
Well, thank God it wasn't too cold these last few days.
No, but we were lucky because we're the regional emergency facility, so the town, we were eligible for, to obtain that large generator that's behind us through the state. And so we didn't really have too long without electricity, so that was nice.
I did have a question that might be relevant to the police department as well. The new policy that we adopted, I think it was last year, with noise ordinance with dogs barking, I was just wondering if you've had a chance to respond to any calls or anything recently to see how that's been implemented, if it's been good or bad or helpful?
We have those occasionally, not very often. And usually it entails the officer going and speaking with the tenant or the resident. And usually they're pretty cooperative, and they bring the dogs in. We don't have a whole lot of those, but one thing I would mention about that is the fines are relatively minor in comparison. And probably along the line, we should look at raising those fines.
And I had somebody that reached out to me recently. She had a problem with her neighbor, and she was happy that the policy had been revised because the old policy, I think, was an officer had to listen to the noise for...
For 10 minutes.
Right, and it's just, it was kind of crazy, so. Exactly.
Are we still doing the cans before...
We still do the cans.
I mean, it's probably a lot of work.
It is a lot of work. But we have been getting kids in. We've got individuals who come in for community service in lieu of paying like a traffic fine or something like that. We also have a lot of students from URI who are involved with fraternities and sororities who come on over and help us. So we're doing a lot, but some, a lot of the grunt work is being, you know, we're being assisted with that from these other individuals.
Kind of relevant to such, I mean, I mean, that's a lot of things.
It varies. I mean, we've gone anywhere from on a low scale of probably 700 and then to a higher scale of 4,000, depending on, you know, the year.
So is there a problem related to that?
I cannot remember how long I've been doing that. It's been since about, I think, 1997, we've been doing the aluminum cans. I mean, along with the aluminum cans, we do the yard sale. We've done other minor fundraisers. We do our Giving Tree. So we have a lot of different things that help to bring it all together, so when you add them all up, it's beneficial. I think a lot of the little ones all together come out to a nice amount.
Next division up is the harbor patrol. We see the harbor master here. This division requires $7,770 in tax support. The overall expenditure budget is up 5%. There's a decrease in services of 21%, which is offset by an increase in the commodities. They do receive mooring revenue of $36,000, which is an increase of 2,000 over the prior year. Mike Stack?
Evening. It's being built in Florida currently as we speak. Hopefully, within the next couple of months, it'll be here certainly for the start of the season, we're told. So thank you again for your support on that. Really appreciate that. Like to point out, that is not our boat in that picture.
That was on your wish list.
We don't have a 50 cal on the deck. And, yeah, those boats are a couple of million apiece, so.
Thank you for not ordering that. How are you doing with staffing?
Very well. The program that was instituted years ago by Barry Anis in mining, students from both Mass Maritime Academy and URI's Marine Affairs Program, has worked out really well. And it's kind of a pipeline that everyone hears about it going forward. And so we generally will get quite a bit of interest, and most of the time, most of that interest, they want to go into that type of career field in some variations. So it's worked out very well to do this, you know, staffing these areas.
Do you guys have an AED onboard on the boat?
No.
No, okay. And I assume that, are you guys trained in like first aid or anything like that?
That is a requirement, yep. We are required to have first aid, CBR training minimally.
What are most of your calls for?
Anywhere from boater in distress, somebody breaks down, somebody's seen towards a rock, somebody's in unfamiliar water, sometimes medical emergencies. Just general inquiries on the waterway, assisting the Coast Guard, assisting the police department if they have calls, require them to be on the water.
The next division in public safety is communications. Communications division requires $274,770 in tax support, overall increase of 4.5%. Just typical wages, 4% increase includes COLAs and STEPs. Benefits are up 9.4. Services are 3.3, which is offset by a decrease in commodities and capital outlay. Lance?
Good evening. How are you? Have any questions? Perfect.
Always a man of many words.
How are you doing with the new technology?
The radio box vendor was doing the FCC license studies last week. He's coming back Tuesday to do one more test, and that should be on the way hopefully soon. We have a few new constructions going up. They're in limbo with their boxes right now, so we're hoping the radio box will be in by that time. by that time. Are you still having a lot of failures? Last week, yes. We got crushed, the last two storms. I hope so.
Some of that wind doesn't sound promising.
All right, thank you.
Finally, is the Emergency Medical Services Division. EMS requires $1 million, $177, $724. Expenditures, overall increases, the budget is up 5.8%. Wages are up 1.7%. This is just a combination of COLA step, offset by resignations. Benefits are up 20%, which is associated with family medical plans being budgeted. Commodities are up 7.3. Capital outlay is up 5.7. We receive $590,000 in rescue run revenue, which offsets the operating budget. Greg?
Good evening. Any, I can, any questions you have, and I can kind of discuss some of the questions.
I have a quick question. Your number of runs, is it remaining kind of stable or?
No, in 2017, we increased about 8%. So far, year-to-date, this year, we're up 17% same time last year for January and February.
How much do you share with other towns? If they know if there's no responders, do you go to any?
Yes, we have mutual aid agreements with Narragansett, Charlestown. So we service them, they help us when we need units here, so we're constantly helping each other. Yeah, it's happened more often. Typically in, I would say in South County. What happens in Westerly, Charleston affects us. What happens in Narragansett affects, it becomes during the day. You know, Westerly is running mutual aid for Charlestown, Hope Valley, Exeter, and so we have to cover that. We don't go that far, but it is a direct correlation in, as the volume increases, we see that more often.
With the mutual aid to Narragansett in Charlestown, do you find that it's kind of a fair balance, or do you think that REMS is responding more, so?
I think we're responding to Charlestown a lot more recently. Narragansett, I think we're pretty even. We help each other fairly well. It's not really one-sided, but we tend to, there seems to be a gap in Charlestown and that area, and we tend to go there more. And they help us also. I mean, we-
I know, I think Charle-
Yeah.
Just to follow up on the comments that we had about the opioid epidemic, I know that privacy prohibits a lot of that sharing of information, but I would be interested in finding out how it affects the community in a general sense, you know, about how many-
Exactly, yeah. In 2017, we administered Narcan about 51 times. We coded, the op, the way the reports are written, they're coded under certain things. They might, the paramedics may code unresponsiveness, or they may say, "It's an opioid." We have 13 documented that if you run the report, it says opioid, but I think there's more than that. And working with the prevention, we're finding the data is not everybody's calling us. They're responding by car to the emergency rooms. They may not always get in the 911 system, so I believe there's more calls out there. We're seeing a lot more responses where Narcan is in the home. And we run into the situation of responding to the call, Narcan has been given to the person, and in our minds, that patient needs to go to the hospital and be evaluated. But they will, you know, become alert, and then they'll not want to go to the hospital. And that becomes a concern for us because we want to transport them to the hospital. One of the things we're working with, with prevention, is through that grant of $5,000 is, you know, typically, we can be at the front lines, so we could be a gatekeeper providing information for help, giving the number, the 1-800 number, or providing the pamphlets to the family and kind of helping them out. So we're, with that $5,000 grant, that's what we're looking at doing, is having materials possibly for us, so when we get to the scene, we can provide that information and help people out.
I want to say, I know at the community events I've volunteered with, with the Wakefield Village Association, one of your employees, I don't know if it's through the union, often comes to those events and brings the CPR dummy that you guys have and supplies and resources for people in first aid. And I know that he had one of the most popular tables because he was teaching children how to use Duke impressions and was very active, and I just think that that's a great way to interact with the community. And just the visual of seeing, you know, the rescue there, them in uniform, I think that more outreach like that and more communication just makes it even easier to call you guys when they need you and to see you as an asset.
Yeah, and we've taken up the initiative that, and we get caught up with CPR and AED of issuing a card. And to us, it's just as effective to have a 10-minute conversation with somebody and showing somebody what to do. It's so effective. And in fact, the, we had a cardiac arrest yesterday when a police officer arrived a few minutes before us and started CPR, and the patient was discharged today.
Right.
And CPR works, regardless of who's doing it.
I've seen you around town.
It works. Anything, as far as you mentioned, the school's safety, we are working with the resource officers and our personnel of knowing the schematics of the schools, walking through the schools, coming up with a tentative plan. Of course, whenever, God forbid, something does happen, the plans will be fluid, but we're having a conceptual idea of things that we would put in motion. And we look at that not only for the schools, but also other potential areas within the town, so we try to be prepared for that.
Actually, that prompted me to think of another concern I had with the Acela train in Kingston going through. I was wondering if the fire departments and police department and EMS have a sort of response plan for any sort of tragedy that might be involved?
Yeah, that's one of the, that's one of the events that we look at. Areas of concern or access to that train towards the Great Swamp, things we look at is having a cache of supplies, getting to that location. Our biggest challenge would be access to that part of the tracks.
Right, so there's collaboration between the, like, the fire district?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. And I've been in touch with Amtrak, the person that's in charge of safety for the Northeast, and we're looking at possibly getting a train, a car in Kingston over the summer to do training of practicing, loading patients off of the train, and for realization with the train, so personnel familiar with that. So we're hoping that can, they've added the other track, so that allows them to do that, so I'm hoping that will come through.
Yeah, that'd be great. And just, it seems like in the recent year, we've seen more and more train accidents, and I know we're always looking to bring more rails down into Kingston, so I would hope there's a-
Yeah, that's one of the things that keep me up at night.
Yeah, I'm with you there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Do we have anybody else? We can just finish up with the rest of the budget. We touched upon insurance during opening remarks, the first budget work session, but just a quick overview. Property liability insurance is up 0.85%. Unemployment insurance has an increase of 44%, and we do self-insure that, just to reiterate that. Workers' compensation is up 9.68%, which is really associated with details, town details and private details. In private details, workers' compensation is reimbursed by the private contractor, the outside contractor. Moving on, I think we had capital outlay. There are really no changes to capital outlay from the adoption of the capital budget. The appropriation in the proposed budget is $1,532,500 in this year. Last year, it was $1,499,500. So it's an increase of $33,000 in the capital outlay, pay-as-you-go section of the CIP document. And finally, is our debt service fund. Tax support associated with debt services, $1,100,000, an increase of $6,357. Basically, the debt service associated with the education is, has decreased $138,000 to $1,134,000, and that's just basically debt falling off. Debt service associated with the town has increased $115,000 to $1,040,000. That is associated with the August 2017 bond issuance. I issued bonds in August for $5,550,000. $4,150,000 was for the recreation center, $1 million with a school bond, and $400,000 for road improvement bonds. Total outstanding debt, geo-debt as of 2019 is $10,653,000. Other than that, that's, that's all I have.
I just have one quick question, or a comment, rather. During the presentations yesterday, specifically around recreation, I noticed in the presentation it says like the cost to taxpayers because, you know, things like the Peaceville Office Building, there's no tax dollars that get used for it, and the Guild, there's no tax dollars for it. And maybe this is just me, but it would be helpful, I know the debt service isn't included when we say how many tax dollars go to support this. It's just tax dollars, but knowing our debt service fund is sort of teased out and separate in here, it would be helpful to me to see like how much debt service is carried with, say, you know, the Recreation Department, or how much debt service is carried with different departments, just so I know conceptually.
I think I have that, Liz. If you look in tab four.
Okay.
If you look at the bottom half of the schedule with expenditures-
Okay.
And just go along, three quarters of the way down on the page is debt service, if you follow that along.
Okay.
So $2,174,000 is in our debt service fund, which is for school and town fund, school and town debt only. And then wastewater, there's $30,175,000, and solid waste is $180,000.
Okay.
So currently, we don't have any debt associated with the Guild, but there is self-supporting fund anyway, so that won't be coming out of your tax dollars.
Right, I guess I was thinking more like the Rec Center and just specifically in the presentation where it said like tax dollars go, you know, tax dollars that support it, and it had a number next to it. And at first, I was like, oh, that's with debt service? I'm like, that's great. And then I was like, oh, wait a minute, that's not, no, it doesn't include that, so, but thank you, I'm glad you pointed that out.
So do you want the debt service broken out by program?
Well, I just, I thought it was not misleading, but I, for me, I misunderstood to think those are the only tax dollars that go to support that department. And then, but we also have the debt service on those, in those departments, so for me, that was an addition.
Right, but because the actual debt service is in a separate fund.
Right, right.
Okay.
So I was just trying to make that connection.
So are you also looking for the annual payment associated with the debt associated with the project? Is that?
Not a specific project, but with the whole department.
Yeah.
And I mean, that's, you don't have to do that for me, but I just was making the comment that-
It's not difficult if you want me to-
I can make the connection, I can go back and add it in and stuff, the notes for myself, but I just wanted to say it out loud.
I'm sure in one of my pieces of paper, I have it here. Actually, I know I do. That's why I'm saying to you, if you want it, I can give it to you.
You've got just about everything I could want.
I can give it to you by open space, you know, how much debt we have associated with open space, that type of thing, if that's what you're looking for.
That would be helpful if you, if you get a chance.
I have it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Go come. I'm done until next week. We meet on Monday?
It's on the 19th.
What's that?
Typically, if we're gonna amend any of these-
So we meet again Monday, and then we, with the school committee also next week?
On Wednesday, that's, Wednesday at 7:00.
We'll be here, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe, everybody. I hear it's windy out there.